Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Beaver Creek City Council Work Session on May 18th. And may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales. Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Senator Garcia. Here. Councilmember Stewart. Here. Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
There. And before we move on, we do want to reach out and say welcome to our newest council member, Councilman Glenn Horr. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for having me.
We'll talk more in a little bit. Do you have an agenda before this this evening? Are there any corrections?
Yes.
I have a motion. So move. I believe I have a motion in the second to approve the agenda. I oppose same. It carries. We have next item is possession items and we have three of them. Start with the income tax. Is that you Pete or McQ?
We're going to share a little bit. We sent you as part of the packet and I was going to say we're getting a lot of feedback. So if everybody can be muted except when they talk, that might be the best way. Sent you the part of the packet, the income tax code, which was what 92, 93 pages of legal, legalese speaking. We have even since then, we've had in reviewing it, we've had a couple of changes. So I just sent you literally 10 minutes ago, two pages. That's page four and page 44 that has the changes on it that we just made to that. Actually, Mr. McQ has been working on the actual ordinance itself, which we had saw a lot of changes that were needed in that. Steve, had you even sent that yet? He may not even sent the last.
I just sent it to you just before this.
Okay. So I haven't even reviewed that part yet. But that's just the ordinance. So the main piece of the body is the 92 pages. I know you have had some time to review it and take a few naps in reading it. But I wanted, maybe we'll start with Steve or Bill. One of you two want to start first with it and kind of, I can't, I'll just say this because it's important to note that the ordinance itself is almost ripped out of Ohio revised code of what we have to say. Years ago, there was so much flexibility of what we could do, what we could allow, what we could exempt, what we could not exempt. And now it's almost a boilerplate, the way the state has done so many things. So many of the options are just no longer there. Like I just give you, and it was on a summary that, you know, the age 18, we used to be able to exempt those under age 18. You no longer can do that. Now, cities that have had it exempt are already grandfathered in, so they can continue. But that's just an example of one of many where, you know, you might find another city that's allowing this or doing this, and that's fine. They've been grandfathered in. But now the document we have, that's why it's not a whole, it's not really a difficult document these days because there's not a whole lot of choices in the options that we have. So I just wanted to express that. Steve, you want to take us through or and Bill chime in? I'll let you guys.
Yeah, I mean, Pete, you, I wasn't going to go through all the, but you, we have that memo that I know you sent out, which has the bullet points by page. I'll have a copy right here, I guess I can print it here, but I don't want to make the noise of printing it.
You got key, the key points, Steve?
Key points, yeah. It's the key point, which, you know, again, the key points on this is it's 1%, 100% credit. As Pete said, the manager said, the 18-year-olds, there is no choice in it. That was only applied if we had pre-2016, which we didn't. So being new, we have to start with what is. The intent is it exempts a lot of income, but again, what we exempt is what the Ohio revised code, what the state legislature has determined we can exempt. Many retirement benefits, social security, things of that nature. And that is, that is in there. And then it defines income. It is, it is effectively an earnings tax. That is the best way of thinking about it. It's not really a true income tax in the sense the federal is an income tax, state is an income tax, this is an earnings tax. So it is oriented and its focus is on earnings, not on income. So we've incorporated a number of provisions in here, even though the Ohio revised code, the way that it's drafted, there are provisions where you just basically have to expand a bit on it to try to make it a little more explainable to what you have. So if you go through it, a lot of it is very similar, but some of it is not. And, you know, they're always making changes. As example, pension was just last year, before January, they had to change pension. Well, now that, and that's, you know, one of the things is the prior definition pension was, I think, to the public, far more, the public would understand it. It was more what the public would think. The state came along and felt that pension had to be redefined. It is very legalistic and very tax oriented at this point. But that was a new code change that come in. So periodically, they, you know, there are new code changes and certain points of this, you know, will throughout the years, I'm sure, have to change as to, as the ways to make money and the way earnings occur and things of that nature will change. We did, like one thing in the code is we took domicile and sort of reorient the structure because the ones that is originally drafted for code, the ones that you would think about, like where you live, were down the bottom. So we switched them around because, again, trying to make it a little more user friendly for the public, because some of the other domicile reasons are not really something I think most people would ever look at or think about. People are going to, you know, want to know, does it apply to me? Well, look, I'm a domicile and where you live is an easy one, right? I mean, I think that's where most people would say, okay, I live in Beaver Creek. It applies to me. So there are, it is, as I say, as the manager said, it's long, a lot of pages. It also is not really a documented, a document for the reasons for it. It does have, as you'll note in the first page, and I think that's why I say first page is really page four. We do have provisions in there with respect to the purpose of the funds, how much it is, because under section 718.04, there's specific things you have to say, one of which is how much is the tax, two, who's it really applied to. So there are certain purposes, the per, one of which is like 73912, that's again on page four, after the index, you know, it'll have the purpose of it. And there, it is broad. It's intended to be, you know, broad, so we cover, you know, we don't want to say one specific purpose, as that may not prove to be what you want. So it is, and also is that the funds go into the general, general fund. Again, unlike a real estate tax levy where we have the police levy, the street levy, we might have a park levy, we could have a general operating levy. We don't have any, but we could by the code. You know, levies are very oriented toward specific purposes and therefore towards specific funds. Income tax or earnings taxes is oriented toward the general fund. So it's a different philosophy and different way of funding. So that with this is that then you can take the money, council then can appropriate the money out of the general fund to the police department, whereas before the police department had a, had a tax levy. This will provide a pile of, you know, funding in the general fund or distribution. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I mean, specifically, I can go into more detail, but I don't want to, you know, drag it on. Does council have a question or Bill, you want to?
Yes, Steve, just for clarification, when the issue is put on the ballot, so the ORC, the ballot language actually reads an income tax. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. I mean, and Steve's right, it is truly an earnings tax based on what you make and it's not, but again, the ORC requires us to say on the ballot language that it is an income tax. So you might get that question out there, we always did, about we portrayed it as a earnings tax, and it really is. It looks and spelled like an earnings tax, but again, as far as the ballot language goes, it's going to say income tax on the ballot language itself, so.
Yeah, here's, here, let me just pull it up. I'll read it, read it to everyone. It will say, shall, shall the ordinance providing for, you fill in 1% in this case, levy on income for, and again, from the, from the 3912, the purposes, add those in there, right? You pass. And there'll be for income tax, against income tax. That's.
They can't use earnings.
No, no. The Ohio revised code, section 718.04 is very specific on that. I mean, it's very specific and there'll have to be a resolution also, but it says exactly what the ballot language will say. And I would expect that the Board of Elections would reject it if we deviate from that language because they're going to expect to see that language.
Hey Steve, when you add that ballot language for the purpose in 3912, do you add all three sections to the ballot? Because I really like section three, that renewed revision that explicitly states the 3.4 mil street levy will not be renewed.
No.
So that would not go on there as one of the purposes, even though it's under purposes?
Brief, brief description of the purpose for the proposed levy, you know, the purpose is really to provide funds for the general municipal operations. That's really what the purpose is. The impact of doing, passing it is for the, for the tax levy. But you're not really voting on the tax levy, they're voting on the income tax. So I think, I think by doing that, again, Board of Elections, Secretary of State could reject your ballot language.
Okay. But that's a good point, Pete. What we did today, at least, as we were going through this, was saying that whether or not in the actual ordinance, remember, this is like the tax code, it's exhibit A, but in the ordinance, whether or not we say that, again, the beginning of that is really just the history, but below that, it's, where it says therefore, that's the legal ramifications of this ordinance, and we were thinking about putting that in there and cement that in.
Well, I like it. I mean, I think it's exactly what we were shooting for.
Yeah, we wanted as much in the tax code itself because you have the ordinance, you have the tax code. Like I said, the tax code is basically exhibit A of the ordinance. But if we could get it into the tax code, we worked it in there. So what, what council member Bales is talking about is in 39.012c, it's a new section we just added, and it talks about, you know, we're diversifying the city of Beaver Creek's revenue stream and reduce the city of Beaver Creek's dependency on property tax levies. On approval of the 1% amount by the majority of electors voting on the tax, the 3.4 mil levy currently in effect, which levy is set to expire on December 31st, 2021, shall not be renewed. So that, that's just concreting what, you know, council has been, the proposal that has been, you know, put forward, that that levy is going to fall off. So, you know, the, somebody saying that we won't do it, you know, we've literally put it into the tax code. We felt that that was important. And I just want a couple of other things that are on the change. Under 39.013, which was the allocation of funds, and it used to be just a simple one line about the allocation, how council shall, you know, approve, appropriate the funds, and that's basically all it said. We went into it a little bit more depth of, so people understand that it's not, council just doesn't, you know, there's always open, open budgetary process, allowing public input through various steps of the annual budget and appropriation process, includes the ability for residents to provide input through tax budget, budget work sessions, public hearings for the annual appropriation ordinance. So we wanted to say a little bit more than council just, it's not just a, you guys decide and there's, there's nothing, there's no input. So we wanted to be a little bit more open and share information on how that would be done when council decides to take the funds from the income tax, earnings tax and distribute it. How, how is that? That's all done in public, it's all done by ordinance, there's public input, that can happen. And another area I did want to say is.
After we got our packet.
That was exactly the same thing. The only thing I'm, is page four and page 44, I sent you an email right before the meeting started because we just hot off the press.
Okay, so that's for, the page four is where the changes are that we just received.
Yes, and page 44. Yep, there's, there's two pages. So.
We talked about that at, well, about 12.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we, this is literally hot off the press. I had minutes before, Steve just sent it to me before the meeting too.
Before you move on, so on that page four, under the section 39.013, I do like that wording a lot. I'm wondering if it makes sense to add, and this may be just redundant, to add an extra little comma with a sentence that says per ordinary or per regular ordinances, so that further reinforcing that this is typically how council always allocates funds, how we always allocate things to the general fund. I don't know if, Steve, you think it would be worth adding in just a few extra words?
Yeah, let me.
Procedure or formal.
Yeah, let me pull this up.
Procedure or something to that effect.
Well, and that's interesting, we debated about that because theoretically, when we have the budget work sessions, those aren't really open to the public, even though we've allowed people to come in and talk during those, Bob is always, you know, a lot of people like give their comments, we've had the Gulf Advisory Board come in, say some things and things like that. And so we were just trying to make this more of a formal to say, yeah, you will get an opportunity. And again, we might just have to change how we do that, whether or not we, after you go buy a fund, then you ask the residents that are there if they have any comments or concerns. Or when we go through the five-year capital improvement program, you know, we might open it up after we review that to say, is there something, anybody have any comments about what the five-year plan is and in particular, what the next year plan is, which is incorporated into the budget?
And I was playing, I was, I was, sorry, I was, I was planning on hopefully being able to, council to agree to do that this coming year. As a department gets done with that, we let council ask questions and then we open it up to the public for any input and questions. Because it's the only time. I wanted to clarify one thing Bill said, and he didn't mean to say it in this way. The budget meetings that we do have are open to the public. They are open. It's just a matter of we've in the past not standardized on having public comment during those meetings. We have done public comments. I think the last two years, people have had questions and because there's only one or maybe two people there, we just let, let it, you know, let them ask. But I just wanted to make sure that's clear that the public, the budget meetings that council does have, we always have typically two budget meetings because it takes so long to go through each department and go through, literally go through, for the public watching, we go page by page by page of every budget line item. So it takes a while. But we do allow the public to attend those meetings. We just hadn't normally allowed questions.
Yeah, and that was the question I had, we hadn't really discussed about whether budget work sessions is something you want to formalize within this, but, you know, clearly during the tax budget and the annual appropriation ordinance, there's going to be public comment.
Yep.
The budget work session, not necessarily.
But we could, we could allow that. And that's something I think that we, we could start doing that this year coming up. I think I had, was going to work on a proposal to do that, you know, because it, when the income tax, you know, if it passes, there's going to be, I think it needs to be even more, more input because right now, I mean, as we know, our budgets are string lined. There's, there's not a whole lot of flexibility. We all know there, there, it's, we're doing, there's no options almost, literally, because of how, how it is. And not to say we're going to be doing that, but if we get an income, there's going to be capital projects, there's going to be that. So that's the time to hear from people that, hey, I think this project's more important than this one, or this, this road, or this bridge, or this whatever is, is more vital to be fixed first, which they could do that now as well. But I think there'll be more input needed if the income tax passes. But Joanna, the change, yeah, if, if, if Mr. McQ understands what change you want, that sounded simple.
What was the change again?
It was just something to the effect of adding three extra, four extra words and say something to the effect of, you know, finally pull the, I pull the wording back up. Just where it says, you know, this includes the ability to relevance.
Resident.
First part, 13, 39.13, the first paragraph, deposited into general fund and shall be appropriated and distributed through annual supplemental appropriations ordinances adopted by city council. If we add a comma in there or something else and then continue on the fact of pursuant to other ordinances or in accordance with other allocations or something, so that they know that this is what we do, whenever we go into the general fund, this is what we do. It may not be the same way every time, depending on the way it's being presented to us, but this is in the same course of our, you know, always in the course of actions. Because I think one of the issues we see with income tax is that people are, they have reservations about having any type of council, whoever it is, have total control over what happens with the income tax. So I think if we add in an extra few words in there, you know, per typical procedures, per ordinary procedure, something to that effect, so that they know that it will be in line with everything else that we do. There's nothing funny going on with what we would appropriate the money for, just to kind of, I would hope that the extra words will put people at ease. I don't know. But anyway.
What you just said as allowed by law.
I'm sorry?
Correct. What you just said as allowed by law.
Well, I think she was trying to communicate that we already have procedures and processes in place, just that for everything else, and this is going to follow those same procedures. And, you know, just like if we did an ordinance tonight to change the budget, right, and we're going to change something, you guys vote on it, it's the same process that, you know, that would go through if we had a general fund change, that we were going to allocate more dollars to the police department or something. It would go through that same kind of process. So I think she was just trying to.
That's really what I'm getting at.
Yeah, hint at that there, there's policies and procedures already in place that this is going to follow.
Well, it's really, yes, really the chart, it's the charters, it's section 10 of the charter.
Well, maybe you refer back to the charter there then.
Back up just a second, Joanna, you're wanting to just, in essence, remind people that it's the same as any other ordinance.
Right.
For public input and public hearing. So I think, I think that's what I'm hearing.
It is. It might sound, but it was just something that I thought maybe we could think about so that it really reinforces that. Because again, like I said, I know a concern that I hear from residents a lot is that they don't know if they like the idea of this body, any body, whoever's elected to it, just having total control. So if you put things in there to reassure residents that we are going by the book all the time and this is how we do it for everything, I don't know, maybe that would help for.
You just have to be careful because, you know, the appropriation ordinance is the one that's done the first meeting in December. It'll be meeting, and it's a one-time reading. So it isn't like a regular ordinance where they have three readings in 30 days. It's, you adopt it that night, so.
And that's what I'm referring to.
Trying to emphasize that a little bit more by saying, you know, again, the process is they get one shot at it with the tax budget. It's a single reading, and the same thing with the appropriation ordinance at the end. And really the middle is where that, the budget work sessions occur that determine where all that gets budgeted. So you just have to be.
But there could be times when they, you would come back for other, for other things that we talked about, right? I know my, my audience is a little fuzzy there, but there, there could be other times where it's not, there are times where you come and ask for other things to appropriate out of the general fund, right?
Yep.
Right, but those are only one reading, so it's not like, again, they have a.
But it would, it would still be in accordance with typical procedures for that.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
That's why I say, to keep it, so that you're not creating new procedures here, if we're going to change that, then I would recommend you, you know, refer to the section 10.10, annual appropriation, that's the process.
Right. I, I don't have a problem with that.
Adopted by city council for section 10.10, annual appropriation count, ordinance.
Joanne, you're exactly right, though. That's the problem that we're having, is that Steve wants to make everything legal. We're trying to make it so it's, you know, people can understand.
Ah, he's going.
We've been having quite a debate.
But I tell you, it might be to refer to the charter because that does give those citizens another feeling that we are going strictly by what's written in the charter.
Yep, I agree. But that's, that is 39.013. That is why we added all this verbiage on the update that you guys, we just sent you to strengthen that, that, just like council member Garcia, that's exactly what we were trying to address, is people who think willy-nilly council can just make changes all over the board so easily. And we wanted to lay out the process that there's a process to follow. Anytime there's public input for, for these changes, so, so that it's, it's not done in the dark of night, it's done under the brightest of light. So that was another part. And I just, one other part I just wanted to bring to your attention that we know we have heard in section 39.081, and actually it's page 44 of the handout, but there's, there were minor, minor changes. We, we took out Ohio, basically the state of Ohio. So this is dealing with the state tax credit or the credit that we would give somebody that already pays an income tax somewhere else. So it used to say in, in Ohio, and we took out Ohio because they worked in Kentucky, northern Kentucky, if they worked in Indiana, it's the same kind of credit that we give. So we just took that out, that if they're paying income tax in another state, fine, we'll give them the same kind of credit as if they were paying it to Kettering or something. But that's, so that's the kind of the change we made in the page 44 that I sent. But what is still true is that on what we added in part C, 39.081c, not that we just added, but what we had sent to you and what's part of the, the agenda packet, was that we did put into the tax code about the 100% credit shall not be changed without first obtaining the approval of the change by a majority of the electors of the city at a general election. So we, we, we kept hearing that people, you know, well, council can change it, you know, willy-nilly. So we did want to make sure that that was as strong as language in the actual tax code, not in the ordinance itself, but that's actually in the tax code, that it, the city council would not change it without the approval of the majority of the electors of Beaver Creek. So we tried to strengthen that, that part up as quick, as hard as we could.
All right. Any other input on the income tax?
Do we, do we have a timeline? Are we going to put that on the agenda?
If we, if we, if council wants to do three readings on this, which way back early on, when we, before we were going, beginning the process, probably in February or January, February, when we were first looking at this, I think it was, a couple of people had mentioned that they wanted three readings, if we, you know, just to provide more input. If that's the case, then yes, May 20.
Six?
26. May 26 has to be the first reading because you have three readings, 30 days approval, then a resolution to, that's actually the ballot to put it on. you have three readings, thirty days approval, then a resolution to, that's actually the ballot to put it on. So it, it's timed out. There's, there's no, if it's to move forward, there's no chance of error because it's three readings, thirty days, resolution to the board of elections. So.
Yeah, the, the process is, the answer is, is that the resolution actually is what puts it, asks it, that it actually be placed on the ballot by the board of elections. And then that's, that's the point, that the whole package is certified and it's all carried over to the board of elections.
Yeah, just, just keep in mind, this process is just approval of the tax code. So the, the ordinance to approve the tax code, what it would be for, what the timeframe would be, all the rules, regulations, that's the tax code. Then you have to have a resolution to actually put it on the ballot. So you have a couple of different, you know, you can hear public input throughout this timeframe. You could, council could say, you know what, we're not comfortable with it, we're not going to put it, we're not going to pass the ordinance itself. Or you could pass the ordinance and then decide, you know, after the thirty days, you thought more of it, you heard more personal, and you decide to not put it on the ballot. So I mean, there's, like I said, there's multiple steps and multiple decision points before it moves forward.
And Pete, if I remember correctly, if we do decide to approve the ordinance and then we have conversations of when to put it on the ballot, the ordinance will remain in effect. So even if we approve the ordinance and say, you know, let's put it on the May ballot instead, that is the same ordinance, correct?
That, that, Mr. McHugh has given his legal opinion that that could, that could be factual.
All, all things being equal, no changes, it's not that we have to, you know, I mean, there's, it's, it's not to say that something could change, we have to revise it, okay? But, um, yes, that's the idea.
Right. Thank you.
That's, that's as close as you're going to get to a yes.
Thank you, yes.
I like it. I like it.
And I know two others on this call will appreciate.
Yeah, we're in lock and lock. Get it.
Yeah, I think we should have three readings.
Well, the goal all along on my end was simple, was to try to get the ordinance passed so we'd at least have our options. You know, if we don't do it now, then we don't have any option except to wait till May, right? Unfortunately, the timeline and COVID and everything else has gotten in the way, but I would be one that thinks it needs to move forward unless we have serious issues with the ordinance itself, or the tax code as it's written. We're not, we're not committing to anything by moving forward other than that we're going to move forward and have our public hearings. Out of the, a part of a moving forward. The result of those public hearings might tell us that maybe we don't want to put it on in November, but hopefully it'll say, yeah, let's keep moving.
Well, if I, unless, you know, I hear anything, I can, we can, the twenty-six, we can go ahead and put that on the agenda as an ordinance and begin the process. If anything else would, I mean, if it's on the agenda on the twenty-six, to, to move it forward, you could not even get a second on the motion to move forward, and it could die right there, too. So you, you understand how, how that could work, so.
That would be the appropriate time to also ask for three readings.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, that leads to the next question, and I'm, not really a question, just an information. I'm going to probably reach out to everyone here in the next couple of days to talk about the next meeting as to whether we try to do it via Zoom or whether we, Pete and I have been, actually Pete's done all the work, and there's people with the, the room, our chamber chambers will, will accommodate us by keeping a social distance as well.
Right.
So would we, because it would be someplace that'd be allowed for, for public input, would we be best to try to hold it in a modified way at city hall versus strictly through Zoom? So I'll be reaching out to each one of you and try to get some ideas and talk about the pros and cons. And then we'll decide here in the next couple of days whether or not we're going to do this next meeting quote, public hearing as a Zoom or whether we're going to do it at city hall. So expect a call.
We, we do, we do have a plan, though. So Mayor affiliate, we do have a plan and have it staged out. And we'd have to have a second staging area. If enough people showed up to wear downstairs, we'd have to have a holding pattern. But everybody, the way we have it designed, everybody would be, if they showed up to give their public input, we would be, they would get the opportunity. And I think that's the important part. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else on the income tax? Let's move on to the COVID nineteen update.
All right, I'll, I'll start it off before I turn it over to my departments. We, the, we did have a soft opening today at city hall, public now. Staff is still trying to schedule appointments, see people refer to them online, try to handle things by call, and, and so on. We are following the social distancing. We are mandatory wearing masks. So anybody entering city hall or any of the other facilities will see us wearing masks. We are asking people who come to city hall to wear masks. We will provide them a paper one. We cannot force you to wear a mask, but we, we hopefully that we respect you, you respect us. And we'll, we'll go from there. We do have the little paper mask that, that people can wear free of charge if they didn't, didn't bring one while they're here in the facilities. So that, that was a big change that just was effective today. Well, the wearing of the mask was effective a couple of weeks ago, but the opening of the buildings was effective today. With that, I'll go around real quick. Let's go Randy. How about you first? Just a quick update on COVID nineteen, your staff.
Yes, thanks, Pete. I'd like to thank council and Pete for the guidance through this challenging time. We we are ramped up and in full speed this month. Our code enforcement officer, over the last thirty days, he's gone out and done over two hundred inspections for complaints and code violations. And that's up from sixty, the thirty days before that. So about three times as much inspections for high grass and overgrown vegetation and things like that. Also, you know, we're on the same number of permits in terms of residential and commercial zoning permits this month. We've did about a hundred in the last thirty days, and we did about a hundred in the thirty days before that. A majority of those happen online. So, and as, as city manager said, you know, we encourage people to apply for their zoning permits, whether that's fences or sheds or, or new houses or additions or things like that. You can go to our website and there's the online permitting center and you can pay for it right there. And that keeps yourself as well as, you know, other people that could be coming in at city hall at social distancing measures. But things are going, good down in the planning department and we expect to continue that. Thanks.
Any questions for Randy? All right. Chief Evers.
I'm assuming you can all hear me. Good evening. Basically, we are back to pretty much our normal operation, following all the protocols, except for our COPPs. We're still discussing how to safely bring them back and at what, what point we're, we're going to do that. So stand by for that. I know they're anxious to get back, but we want to do that in a safe and cautious manner. So we should have some decision on that in the next week or so. As far as call volume, we have pretty much returned to normal call activity. That has been increasing since the first part of the month. And as of Friday, I would have said it was a normal Friday in the city of Beadrew Creek, listening to the, the call volume over the radio. And looking at the reports and the call log, we're pretty much back to a normal activity level. Beyond that, we're just still practicing the safe protocols and the social distancing here in our building, which, you know, on occasions is difficult when you have a number of people in the building during the course of the day. But everybody's doing their due diligence and practicing the safe protocol practices in order to limit the amount of exposure to our fellow employees. So, thank you.
All right. Now, next I'm going to have Mike speak. And Mike, I, I sent an email to council about the good news at the golf course, but I'll let you share that publicly. That's, you know, it's coming, but it's good news.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Happy to be before you this evening. Just, just a couple of quick comments. As Pete alluded to, we got some good information or just some good news from the state as far as guidance for the golf course. And then a little bit more information and clarity from our county health director early this morning. It, it does sound like we're able to move forward, opening our driving range. We'll also be able to open our budding green facility. We've provided some plans to, to the county health department and they approved those plans the way that we have it outlined. We need just a little bit of time to implement those, but we're hopeful we'll be able to get those two things up and running pretty quickly. We also got some guidance on, on our beverage cart at our golf course. We'll be able to get that out and moving around as well. It's been nice to see our starters and Rangers back out at the course and, and great to see a lot of increased play. So again, I'd like to thank council for the support, particularly the golf course and allowing us to get some additional carts. That's really allowed us to continue a good volume of play while, while we're there. A couple of things on, on the street side of things this week is APWA week. We'll have some social media posts talking about our public works, employees and kind of celebrating the work that they do to maintain that city infrastructure. So keep an eye out for that. We are really back to just about general normal operations. The city manager has allowed us to bring some of our seasonal help in, which allows us, our, our higher skilled, full-time employees to get back on some higher skilled tasks. And the seasonal employees are able to help us take care of some of those, those other frontline tasks that absolutely need to be done. Engineering continues to move forward with projects. A couple that I'd highlight for you is that Shakertown Road is getting very close to, to completion. Of course, you saw Shakertown is open. We've got South Alpha Belt still closed, but it looks like that project should wrap up the end of June. And then we'll be, be almost immediately shifting up to Kemp Road and starting on that project. So it's been a great, great time for construction thus far. Parks and Recreation, I, I know Pete shared some additional information with you, but for, for those folks at home, we got some additional guidance from the governor and health director that there's some limited programming that we can do, including some summer camps and some leisure programs. Our programming is going to look different than it's looked in the past. Some things we'll be able to, to do traditionally and some things are going to be modified. And then we've got some new programming that's almost all online. So lots of exciting things coming back with Parks and Recreation. We're really happy to start bringing that team back on board. And we're monitoring very closely the demand for transportation, particularly of our senior center. We're starting to track that very, or we have been tracking that very closely. We're starting to see an increase there. But we anticipate that we may have to start to look at what that transportation looks like to make sure that we can get our seniors to places. We'll see how programming then follows.
Mike, what are you, what are you hearing in respect to the senior citizen center? What's the, what's the challenges there? Is it just the grouping or, or what, what seems to be the, from what you understand, major?
Yeah, the way that we understand it right now is that those facilities, including recreation facilities or large public entertainment spaces as a whole, have been specifically closed by the governor. That's not an area that we're permitted to open. And I suspect that it's largely around the fact that that's one of the most vulnerable populations. And bringing that gathering of people together is one of the larger concerns that we continue to hear from both the governor and, and the state health director. So I think that physical space is probably going to be one of the last things that's opened up. But that doesn't mean that we won't be doing some virtual programming. Or as we start with the transportation, it might mean that we're doing more fitness classes online. It might mean that we're doing other ways to interact with our seniors and just make sure that they stay engaged and socially connected. But I think we'll get a better feel for that as we start to open up transportation and have more direct lines with those seniors. But we would love to open our senior center. It's just something that the guidance right now is that's not the best prudent action for us to take in the state. Then we monitor that, that state information very, very closely. So, thank you. But one other thing I guess I just would share in all of those areas and divisions, we, we're monitoring our expenses and our revenues very, very closely. Trying to make sure that we keep a keen eye on how all those things balance out. And, and we appreciate the support from city manager's office and the additional support we get from finance and HR as we balance all these employees' budgets and making a lot of operational decisions. So that would conclude my formal, formal remarks. If anyone has any specific questions, we're always happy to answer them. Appreciate your help and maintaining the healthy workforce.
Thank you. Quick question. Have you found the additional golf carts to be sufficient for operations? I'm just thinking, if a lot of vacations are canceled this summer, there's the potential that a lot of people do staycations and could play a lot of golf. So have you found the additional carts to be sufficient for the?
Yes, thank you. We're very, very thankful. The city manager allowed us very early, our golf course staff brought it to, to my attention. We were able to work with the city manager very quickly. We were able to secure ten additional, excuse me, thirty additional gas golf carts. I, I jokingly refer to those as like the N ninety-five of mask, because very quickly you start to realize that the electric carts are great, but you need to rent those, you need those additional chargers. You also need a space to be able to store those. And then you need the actual electricity. Your, your building has to be able to support that additional electrical load. Whereas the gas powered, of course, you need a fueling station, which we already have. But they're much, much easier to maintain. And thanks to the, the quick approval by the city manager and our staff bringing that to my attention very quickly, they realized it sooner than most, and we were able to get those carts. Right now, it seems to be working for us. And the governor hasn't allowed outings to happen yet. We're still restricted, not able to do golf outings yet. That's probably where the next push will come and the next challenge with cards will come. Whether we ever are even able to do outings this year or not, it's still unclear. But right now, we, we feel like we're situated pretty well.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Tonnero? All right, Mr. Casera.
Thank you.
Yeah, from a finance standpoint, bottom line is that the, you know, we're tracking all the expenditures related to COVID nineteen and yeah, departments are doing a great job encoding them. So in the event that we do get federal, state, any sort of pass through money, we'll have those ready to go. And we just need to provide the support, just kind of like the theme of reimbursements that we've been going through with the tornado. So we're poised, ready to go. We've been tracking it from early day one. We've got not only the expenditures tracking, we've got the payroll and the benefits tracking too. In the event that, again, something comes down the line, that we'll be poised and ready to go and won't have to go back and backtrack to support all of those reimbursement requests. So the other thing too is I just wanted to bring you up to speed on the tornado. It's about a year ago that we had the event and we still have put in reimbursement for about a million dollars left that we. about a million dollars left that we haven't received yet. So, in talking to Ohio EMA and FEMA, those have been through the process. They've been audited. They're just waiting to get appropriated. And then the last final review is the state of Ohio, the Ohio EMA, to release the funds to us. And again, it'll be the seventy-five percent from FEMA and the twelve and a half from the state. So, we're hoping that in the next month or so that we'll get the remainder of those funds. What they've indicated to me is that we provided them everything they needed, and it's just a matter of folks checking off the detail. Most of them that we have, the simple ones that were under contract, we got paid for in the beginning. That was about eight hundred thousand dollars. And the next batch is a lot of payroll, calculating benefits, hours, tracking that to vehicles that we use. And again, it's gonna take a little longer to go through that process of the checks and balances, but we're hoping that that will be coming down the pike soon. So again, we're poised and ready to go, just waiting for the state to release us some additional funds for COVID, and then we'll determine what we can do to get that reimbursement in with them also. So, that's about it here. Oh, by the way, as far as the, we had, just again, go back to tornado, we did have about three hundred thousand dollars that we're actually submitting with our insurance company. And we've got the majority of that received from them. The only outstanding item really is the Tobias Zimmer barn that Mike's gonna provide you an update here shortly. But so, as far as the Verma side, the insurance side, they've paid for all of the insurance claims that we put to them, and that includes a couple of roofs at the golf course. We had a business continuation claim for the golf course when it was shut down for that day. And then we've got some signals, the guardrails, signs, and some minor vehicle damage that we put in those claims for, and have received all of that money related to that. So, that side is almost done. It looks good, and they were really good to work with, and we're very open to suggestions that I have that it would be covered. And so they gave us the amount that we asked them for, and that's good. As far as the COVID claim, there's a for lost revenue and for direct expenses related to COVID, but unfortunately, about seventy-five thousand dollars split up between the one that's one envisioning us getting a lot of money from them related to that. That put us in a new plane pool and then decide what our percentage will be. But we've been tracking that all through golf course. So, lost brunches is the two big things that I can think of off the top my head, that's where the Mother's Day and then all the events that have been canceled, weddings and golf outings. So, we've been tracking all of that, and the actual coverage is for the net. Oh, that's not like it was for the golf course continuation tornado head, because we're actually down, we didn't have anything, but it's really the net result of the defense that they're looking for. And we just have to pull that together and submit that. But can that claim us a little bit more, a little bit more tight because of the fact that everybody's gonna be applying for lost revenue related to income taxes, hotel, motel, same thing that we are, but it's down to the coverage isn't that great for this particular type of claim. So, that's the financial update from this end. Always with the good news.
Between the tornado last year and the COVID this year, I mean, your office has been right on top of it. We appreciate it very much.
Well, I'd say that it all comes down to the departments. If they're not coding everything and getting it out, we gave them instructions early and they've been doing a fantastic job. And it works a lot smoother. I remember we had the stray line claim that we had about six or seven years ago, and that was, I know that was our first claim ever, and it was just a must to try to recreate. But this time, we're on top of it, and then having COVID right after a tornado, it was, you know, we're like old hat at this now, so.
Unfortunately.
Any other questions for Mr. Casera? All right, we'll move on then to next item, which is the first quarter financial update, and I believe that must be Mr. Casera again.
Yes, if you look at the report, everything through March looked great. We received fifty thousand dollars more local government funds. We didn't buy really any salt for the events. We had an FBO that carried over that we bought from last year's funds. Overtime is way down, and basically, other than the golf course that would shut down in March, and they had a pretty rainy February, they were behind the standard in previous year. But again, from what I understand from Mike, we're picking it up and with the driving range open, although it seems like a minor thing, that's a big event out there, because again, if they don't want to spend the four or five hours golfing all day, they come out there and run the balls and dump some money into that machine out there and feel good about themselves. And I understand we have ten or twelve lanes wide open, ready to go, so we expect that to pick up. And again, the crew out there has done a good job in reducing the expenditures down to the bare minimum to keep the operations flowing and keeping the golfers happy out there. So, kudos to the folks out there. But again, I'm just afraid this second quarter is gonna be a completely different story, and we're starting to see that already. The hotel motel taxes plummeting for April. As a matter of fact, one hotel isn't even, can't even send us any money right now, is what they've indicated. And so, that, and again, interest rates, you know, with the Fed rate going down to zero, that's starting to tank. And then again, we're starting to see the slow trickle of the gas tax starting to diminish, and we expect that to continue for a while. But again, the other side, positive side of that is, we're buying gas for ninety cents one time, is what I saw on one of the invoices. So, you know, because again, we don't even pay all the expenses that the rest of the retailers do, but I mean, it's, well, there's some good and bad on that way, but I'm just afraid that the second quarter's gonna look a little different. And we'll keep you up to date as we look at the projections and let you know how it's trending. Again, our, the tough part about forecasting that is, again, even if you ask the economist how quickly will the economy get back to, you know, normal, and that's what we have to kind of project out and figure out for the rest of the year. So, but we've already made some significant cutbacks with staffing and hiring freezes, and as we gear up, those will start to release a little bit. We've done a pretty good job, all the crews have done, to maintain the expenditures at the lowest level we can effectively monitor and continue its operations, so.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Casera?
And that report, the first quarter financial report, will be councils to approve at the, on the twenty-sixth agenda.
Right. Very good. All right, no questions. We're gonna move on to informational items, and I think we're gonna get an update on the Tobias Zimmer barn.
Mr. Thonero.
Yes, good evening again, Mayor, members of city council. Just a quick highlight, really just a summary piece to come back. We were, presented some information to you early in January, more as an informational piece to let you know that we were following the process to see if there was, receive any public input about Water and Turf Park. As many of you know that Tobias Zimmer barn was knocked down during the tornado. We went through the process to kind of get that public input, and we got a complete amount of input. I was very, very impressed with the volume that we received. We'd intended to do some public meetings as well, but as a result of the COVID event, that's kind of been pushed off to the side. And with the results that we saw from the survey, we feel comfortable moving forward. We're recommending to city council that, or to the city manager rather, that we're gonna move forward with our insurance company and replace the barn. And we will start to look at some of those add alternates. Those are not things that would be covered by our insurance, but as we start to work with an architect, then we can put together some of those options to be included in us, and we've got some good pricing for the future. We've also heard some indications from some groups that they might be interested in doing some fundraising alongside of us, so we can look at that as an option as well. But we just wanted to close that loop with you. I know that we brought that information to you, and as Mr. Casera indicated, that's one of the last things that's having, hanging out there with our FEMA reimbursement. So, we just wanted to make you aware that with this information, we're recommending moving forward with reconstruction of the barn. So, we'll get that going. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that and close that loop, so.
Okay. The, all I would, and I'm sure you all are already doing it, but just, just look at it as a future, so if you can rough in things that you may not be able to put in right now, but if the rough end plumbing or the rough end wiring is there, it's gonna make our future a lot brighter. So, looking forward to it.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that is some of those add-on when we're doing the architectural piece, that we'll do add alternatives, so things like that that we can get a cost to. And if there's fundraising going on too, there's gonna be a lot of coordination as we see if there's something that can be done while it's being built, it won't be covered by insurance, but maybe it could be paid through donations or something else. So, yeah, we're definitely looking at all our alternatives to that.
Comments, questions? Priority would be a bathroom, right, Mike?
That is one thing that we hear. That is one thing that we hear a lot of, yes.
Got you.
I'll tell you, I received a call, I received several calls about this, Mike, and although you didn't have a public hearing, a formal one, I, the majority of my calls were people in support of rebuilding the barn.
Correct.
But to your point, most of them said they'd like to see some variety added to it so that they could use water and sewer, even perhaps air conditioning in the future, you know.
We heard some of that as well. We also heard a kitchen space or so that it could be used more as a rental facility or an increased rental facility, so I'm sure that we'll be looking at a lot more options. But I'm very encouraged. Thank you for sharing that additional information. It does kind of support and goes along with what we're hearing, and I hope you're all hearing and listening as well, so, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Next is council time, and I'm just gonna go down alphabetical if that's all right, and can we start with Vice Mayor Adams?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank city manager and all the department heads and the staff for everything they've done to work us through this, these tough times that we've had. I know it's not been easy for you, and we really appreciate all of your efforts. I'd like to welcome and congratulate new Councilman Duer on his appointment to city council. Welcome, we're forward to working with you. I also received an email today about Kim Farrell, our park superintendent, who was elected to the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association Board of Directors. So, it's a real feather and a cap. I have a special congratulations for Councilman Bales for being selected to UTRSA Southbound Legends of the Game for 2020. That's quite an accomplishment. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
There you go.
Well, if the businesses in the city and state started to open up, we were pleased to attend the opening of Fairfield Comic Cell this past Tuesday. I attended along with Mayor Stone, Councilman Bales, and Councilman Duer, and it was fun to be able to watch them open up. And as more of our local businesses open up, we hope we have safe openings, and we encourage all the citizens out there to support our local businesses. But please follow the CVC guidelines. We want everybody to be healthy and safe. This past Saturday, I was able to work with Police Department's Community Engagement Officer, Mark Brown, and celebrate several BHS graduates' graduation. Fun part for me is I got to dress up as McGruff's Crime Dog, and if anybody ever does that, it's really hot inside that one. Yeah, we're trying to save it up. The other thing that's still ongoing, and I seem to bring this up every time, is the census. Beaver Creek's been doing really well in that. I think so far, self-recording, Beaver Creek's reported almost seventy-eight percent, which is better than most cities and states around the country. It's really important to pull at that census, so if you haven't completed yours, please go to 2020census.gov and get that done, because it's really important to be counted. That's a list of all my activities, but I do have a question for city manager Landrum. Recently, the Walmart shooting fuddled between the city and the Crawford family. Could you please tell us where the funds for this settle came from and why we decided to fuddle?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, the biggest part there is that the, the negotiation was between the insurance carrier and the Crawford attorneys and family. It is the insurance carrier that also paid what's been reported as the 1.7 million dollars of the settlement. So, no city funds, that's why we're used, and that's also why you never saw a city council approve an agreement or by ordinance or resolution. Nothing like that ever flowed, went through city council, because that was negotiated by the insurance company.
Okay. Well, that is, that's important to get out to the public, the process, and it'll clear up a few things that we've seen online and different questions that come around. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
Oh, that's all I have, thank you.
All right. How about Councilmember Bales?
All right, thank you, Mayor Stone. I want to echo some of the things that Vice Mayor Adams said. Glenn, welcome to council. I look forward to working with you. It's fantastic. Also, congratulations to Kim Farrell for being elected to the Board of Directors for OPRA. I, as a member of OPRA myself, I got a chance to vote for her, so I'm glad to see that she got that appointment. I'd also just like to thank all of the workers in the city. They're doing a fantastic job. I've seen them out and about maintaining the right of way and making our parks look great. And pulled into Rotary Park today before the rain started, and it was nice to see the surface drive all the way through the park. And I would encourage people to take a drive out there and enjoy that park and, of course, stay off the play equipment, but it's such a crown jewel of the city, and you're doing a great job, and just wanted to thank you all for that. That's all I've got tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Carr?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Again, I'd like to thank the manager, his crew, for a tremendous job you've been doing through this challenge. Also, a special congratulations, already been mentioned, for Kim being on that state board that's gonna really be a very helpful, I think, to the city of Beaver Creek. Also want to welcome Glenn again. All the best wishes to you and glad to have you as part of the council. And I had some citizens call me, see if you guys can help me. They wanted to know, what are the outside eating areas in Beaver Creek? I, you know, I know this is a limited time, I know the eighteenth the restaurant's open, but I don't, could anybody tell me how many are they or where they are? I just had two people call me about it. Anybody?
It's just each individual restaurant has, you know, potential, has an outside area. You can see that they have an outside area, so there's many different restaurants.
But you don't know specific ones that are doing?
I mean, there are several restaurants at the Green.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's good. And I'd like to thank the citizens of Beaver Creek again for trying to adhere to the procedures. I've seen a lot of good examples of people really trying to follow the process, six-foot masks, and been a challenge, but I think a lot of citizens need to be thanked for that. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you.
Karen, I know that Malano's had all of their patios open. Who did? Malano's.
Oh, Malano's, yeah, okay, all right.
Most of the restaurants that have patios actively, normally, are open. Most of the restaurants that have patios actively, normally, are open, uh, the ones that I've seen, so. Pasha Grill, just to name a few, I mean, it, uh, it's all over.
Very good, thank you.
Councilmember Duer, the newest member. Sir?
I want to start by thanking you all for the opportunity to, to join council and really appreciate the, uh, the chance, uh, to do this and, uh, to, to really jump in. Uh, echo Vice Mayor Adams' sentiments with regard to Fairfield Commons. It was wonderful to help reopen. They've done a very nice job in terms of, uh, distancing, a lot of hand sanitizer following government guidelines and so. I would encourage people to, to go out and, uh, shop local, uh, with that. Uh, also want to say thank you to all the teachers with Beaver Creek City Schools today, formerly the last day. Uh, and it was certainly melancholy, you know, driving my son up to see his teacher, uh, and kind of have a, have a goodbye, but I know so many of them worked very, very hard to transition all of their classes online. They, they introduced Zoom meetings. I had all kinds of different assignments for the, for the students, so I want to say thank you to all, all of the teachers for, for adjusting to all of this, uh, and doing so very smoothly, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, thank you and welcome Glenn. We're excited to have you on council. We're looking forward to working with you. Uh, I'm just gonna echo everything everybody else said, all the congratulations. We're happy to have, uh, amazing staff that are able to do such amazing things during this time. Uh, the only thing that I will add is that I have participated again in the monthly, uh, Miami Valley Regional Planning Committee meeting. So MBRPC meets on the first Thursday of every month and on May seventh, we met and that week, uh, was Air Quality Awareness Week. And one of the things that we talked about is tips and tricks to try to reduce, uh, some pollution in the air and as well as discussing is how, uh, as bad as COVID-19 has been for everyone, uh, in, in the area and in the country, it has surprisingly reduced our air conditions. Uh, so it's been nice to have, well, statistic has something positive to come out of all of this. I put some tips up on the, uh, my council Facebook page on some of the things that MBRPC is can suggesting that people do and hopefully everyone has a great rest of their week this week.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Schworn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first I want to welcome Glenn. Glad to have you here. Glad to not be the newest member of council, so you can take that seat for me. Um, I also want to talk about Beaver Creek City Schools. I want to send out a congratulations to all the 2020 seniors. I'm sure that this is not an ideal situation for them. So, uh, congratulations to them and if we could all kind of keep them in our thoughts, I'm sure they would appreciate it. Um, next, on last Friday, the Light Ohio Blue campaign came to a close, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the Beaver Creek Police Department and thank them for their service, especially during these trying times. I know that it's a different world out there and we appreciate everything the officers are doing. Um, I also want to thank Mike Tonnerro and your group. I think that opening up these virtual events and trying to get creative takes a lot of work and so we really much, very much appreciate that. And then last but not least, last Tuesday, I had my official induction ceremony in the Beaver Creek Kiwanis. So that was an exciting Zoom ceremony. There were five of us that were inducted. Um, and that being said, Kiwanis is doing a fundraiser in conjunction with Beaver Creek, so if anyone is looking to make donations, that fundraiser is available on the Kiwanis Facebook page and will be open till May third. That's all I've got. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, nice thing about going last is I can just say ditto, ditto. But no, it's, everybody's had great comments. I have a couple I'd like to add. Uh, it was mentioned about the reopening of the mall and the Chamber was part of that and they're doing a, uh, an event called a reopening and a re-tying of the ribbon. I have seen some of these on Facebook or elsewhere, but they're going around to any business that wishes to actually do a reopening ribbon tying, so it's, it's a symbolic, uh, way of tying their original ribbon that they cut or one like it back together and open for business, so keep an eye out for those. Uh, Memorial Day. Uh, Memorial Day, we normally have a very formal event at our Veterans Memorial and this year's, we're not going to be able to do that. I've been working with, uh, Pete and, uh, and staff to try to come up with some symbolic, whether we go out and we just have some pipe and music. Uh, the VFW has said they may, uh, they are interested in coming out and maybe going on a 21nd salute and, and then we'd all follow all that by tap, so it's not gonna be a gathering. We're not gonna set up leechers. We're not gonna encourage masses of people like we do and have in the past, but we will have something that's symbolic onsite, uh, just not a formal ceremony. So if you have any thoughts or ideas on that, please let us know on that one. Uh, Pete and I, uh, we talked about the Memorial Day, uh, tornado. Pete and I, uh, met with Channel Two today. They're gonna do a piece on the actual anniversary, so that was the date they gave us, so that would be the, uh, I think it's the twenty-seventh, right? Uh, so on the twenty-seventh, keep an eye out for Channel Two. It was really eye-opening, I think, for Pete and I both. We took him out to, uh, to the most devastated area on Garden View and it, uh, we got a beautiful backdrop of, therefore, brand-new houses that are up and some, some of the trees that were damaged are, are coming back out. So it was a very refreshing and rewarding, uh, episode. Even without the view, it was just beautiful to see that area that's, uh, turning around so well. Uh, and other than that, I too want to thank city staff for all the hard work during this time. I mean, it's, it's not easy working through these, uh, these issues and, uh, you've done a fantastic job. So thank you. Make sure you tell your staffs thank you and, uh, and we all appreciate it and people appreciate it as well. So, that being said, anything for the good? Mr. Landrum, you got anything else you need to add?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. There's nothing else for the good of the cause, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
Back in.
Back in.
I do have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.